Promise me you're gone.
Growing up a new plan.
Promise it might not be the right word. Exactly.
All right, I got seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming out. First order of business is the approval of our minutes from the November fourteenth meeting. And corrections. Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from November fourteenth meeting.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our first applicant of the night is County Line Road Sanitary Sewer Project. And we do have representation.
Hey, nice to meet you.
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for having me.
My name is Kyle Detwiler, manager for the Borough of Telford and also manager for the Telford Borough Authority. So I wear a couple of different hats. Tonight I'm wearing the hat of CKS engineer. Pat is in Cabo and I'm here. So I'm trying to figure out how that deal got snuckered, but regardless, I am gonna give my best attempt to deliver this presentation, which I understand you guys all have a copy of as well. For the County Line Road Sanitary Sewer Project. If you go on the next slide, please. So I'm not, I'm gonna try my best to not be the guy that reads word for word off the slide. I know that is a lot of people's Achilles heel and everybody hates that, but this project is an extension of the authority's existing public sewer system. For the County Line Road area through the construction of a low pressure sewer system, and I'll explain a little bit later on why those terms and that terminology is important. Consisting of forced main pipe and individual grinder pumps that serve each property. The project area encompasses Holler Road, Indian Creek to County Line, County Line from Circle Drive to Wellington Way, a portion of Cattle Road in the vicinity of Valley Road, Circle Drive, Hidden Lane, as well as Valley Road. We go on to the next slide, please. And that is the impacted area there in Yarra. And you can see, Riconia Township will be doing it. We will be delivering the same presentation over there as well for those impacted residents. But any questions about the area that we're talking about here? Anybody that's affected there? All right, thank you. Next slide. So currently, everybody served by an on-lot disposal system, which will need to be abandoned. We're looking at a total of eighty-six connections. And every connection includes an existing building or home, so not tied to new construction. The low pressure forced main will extend throughout the area, discharged to an existing manhole located at the North Lift Station along County Line Road. And from there, sewage will be conveyed to Telford Borough authorities, which would a treatment plan for treatment. So the project itself, two phases. Number one is the public bid, all right? Installation over nine thousand, okay, feed a high density polyethylene pipe HDPE within the roadways of these, so two inches to four inches, and the installation will include excavation back hill restoration. The installing includes one and a quarter inch laterals installed to the edge of the road for connection by the property owner. And this will be work that's completed by the township's contractor. The second phase for private property is the purchase and installation of grinder pump system. And again, that goes back to the fact that this is a low pressure system that the individual grinder pump installation is critical to the success of the low pressure forced main installation of a low pressure forced main lateral for connection to the lateral provided by the township during the public phase to connect to existing building sewer and the abandonment is the responsibility of the homeowner for the on-lot disposal system, which is in the small bullet at the bottom, to be completed by property owner or the plumbing contractor as hired by the property owner. Thank you. So this is an image of a standard or typical low pressure sanitary sewer forced main connection here. And that's a little bit grainy. Kind of looks like an MRI, but uh, gonna give it, give you the hint there as far as the actual connection, how this works. So in sanitary sewer world, we like to use gravity when at all possible. That's the ideal outcome for us. When gravity is available and gravity is our friend, we'll use it. And I'll talk a couple of slides later on, but in this situation here where we are in a low pressure system, okay? When you have gravity in the equation, you have to dig really deep. We're talking eight feet, ten feet into the ground. That typically coincides with a lift station or a pump station or a booster station, something you may have heard of, which is gonna help get all that flow to Telford Treatment Plant. Not conducive to what we are looking to get done here. And in lieu of that, the installation of a low pressure sanitary sewer system. So we're going less depth into the ground, around four feet directional drilled, allow that install to take place. Because we're missing the big pumping station, the big lift station. We need the individual grinder pumps to help push because we don't have the gravity that we can rely on because it's a low pressure, right? And the high pressure goes inside with a forced main, the low pressure forced main, everybody needs a grinder pump to push and push that out in our direction through the manhole that we referenced on the earlier slide. But you can move on to the next slide, please. Thank you. So here's the two phases. Talking about the public bid phase, what that looks like with the construction and the install. Once we get through, okay? The installation of the piece that the public bid will take care of, that you paid potentially off the red line, taking in from curaway cartway, edge of property, bringing it into the rest of the homeowner's residence, to tie it in the rest of the way. We move on to the next slide. All right, so project costs. So CKS did perform very in-depth analysis for us as far as which type of sewer systems, four different options. And they're only listed two here, gravity and low pressure. There was two different types of gravity systems we looked at and two different types of low pressure sewer systems. Cost estimates for a gravity system significantly higher. Those were some of the things that I alluded to earlier. You do need a larger pipe diameter. So we're talking about bigger pieces of pipe that are more expensive, greater burial depth. It costs a lot more to dig down that far into the earth. Greater disturbance, and that is the truth. So the deeper we go, the more things that we're shaking up, the more things we're gonna come in contact with that could affect the outcome of the project. The need for additional easements. So we need to reach out to more affected property owners to obtain, all right? Those legal documentation allow us, especially with the installation of a pumping station or a lift station. And that goes to the last forward point, the need for that pumping station and the installation of the water. So for us, for CKS, what we've applied for, which we are hoping to hear some positive news about in the new year. The township has applied for a DCEV H2O TA grant. Enough enough letters in there like alphabet soup, but that is to the tune of two million seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars to help assist and fund the project. So here's the estimated project cost comparison between all the options that are listed therein. The average cost per unit, the average cost per homeowner. You really wanna dive into the equation here, but total project cost estimate, the average cost. Or you can see by the route of gravity that we're potentially talking about the price for homeowner that's double, right? So thirty-six thousand low pressure system versus the gravity sewer install, we're looking at over seventy-two thousand dollars potentially per unit. And that's the primary driving factor behind, behind, excuse me, us exploring fully the low pressure sanitary system option.
Is that number equated with the grant money?
It is, yes. Yep. Yeah, that, that was the goal. So cost per household here for the LPFS. But right now, you can see the big key H2O grant, zero dollars. That's a budget planning tool. We're never gonna assume that we get grant money. Right? We're gonna plan for the worst and hope for the best. So in the event that that comes through for us, we can adjust these numbers, but in the event right here, we don't get that done, and that is what we're looking at. So estimated project cost in total for the public bid and then the private property. Again, all estimation for what a potential homeowner would have to spend outside of the project cost just on your own property, furniture installation, the grinder pump system, the make and model, as I escaped me right now, manufacturer, but that does come with a manufacturer's warranty, and that'll be covered for at least everything. Full service, no questions asked for at least the first twelve months. Including the connection to the building sewer, the installation of the forced main, and again, an estimation for the abandonment of the affected homeowners, OLDs, the on-lot disposal. Total estimated cost per household there of the thirty-six two, which was number for household on the previous slide. And here is our potential project schedule and project timeline. So December twenty twenty-three consideration by the planning commission, which is me here right now. As we move forward, all of the necessary reviews by all of the outside reviewing agencies that will grant us the permission to move forward. As we flip the calendar over to twenty-four, we'll allow for the requisite public comment period and look for approval and adoption by each township's respective board of supervisors. And then we're hopeful in the spring, DEP approval. As we go through that process, the permit applications, you could see December of twenty-four, water quality management permits. We're gonna do the highway occupancy permits later on in the spring. The project bidding construction as well for the advertisement, both to receive the bids, contract award. April of twenty twenty-four, potential begin of construction in May of twenty twenty-four, and we are estimating about six months to complete, which brings us to November of twenty twenty-four for phase one. Remember, we had that slide earlier with phase one, the red line, and then phase two, phase one, instructions complete, November twenty-four, March of twenty-five, the private property portion, installation of the grinder pump systems as they connect to the low pressure sanitary system and the abandonment of the on-lot disposal system. So that is all of the most pertinent facts and figures that I can give you at this time. Do my best to answer any additional questions as you may have them. In lieu of really technical hardcore engineering specs, I can try to answer anything else. Aside from that.
The low pressure system?
Yes.
Pressure generated by the homeowner's pumps?
Correct.
There's no other supplemental in the system to keep it going?
Yeah, the individual grinder pumps is key for each homeowner, having each of those respective grinder pumps installed.
And so calculating anyone given homeowner that the pump pressure will be enough to get it to where it needs to go without any other assistance?
Yes.
He said it's only inch and a quarter?
Yeah.
And that's inch and a quarter out to the street and then something?
Correct. You got it. Yep.
You're assuming that all the homeowners are gonna take you up on the offer?
Yes.
So that could affect the price on the system?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, for sure. You know, and, and that's definitely gonna be something that needs to be discussed, the mechanic behind payment and payment arrangement and how that whole system will work out. You know, there's certainly quite a bit of grunt work for us to do out the gate before we get to that point, but that is absolutely a valid point and something we need to consider moving forward.
Does the already have similar systems elsewhere within the township, similar low pressure systems with customer grinder pumps installed?
Uh, yes, not to the number of eighty-six, but smaller. Yes.
Yep. And what do you see as any potential failure rate or issues associated with those types of systems?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, for me, universally across the board, the one-year warranty is what you get on the actual grinder pump. You know, you'd love to see that go out a little bit longer there. There is certainly plenty of opportunities for routine scheduled maintenance, making that a part of the regularity. If there is an issue that presents itself, the issue presents itself typically with the grinder pump, but the make model manufacturer, the CKS has vetted, is one that they've used in many other townships, near municipalities, the one that they feel as though their homeowners have the least amount of issues with. You know, not every grinder pump is gonna be perfect and hopeful without issues, but the one that has the least amount of issues is the make and model that's recommended with the bid specs.
My, my last question is more legal. So this is the Telford Zone One area that we're talking about. In terms of what the existing five thirty-seven requirements are for Telford to be able to provide sewer service in Zone One before moving into Zone Two, what percentage of that is covered by this project?
I couldn't guess it. What percentage of what's left in Zone One is covered by this, but I can say this has been a part of the township that the township's been interested in getting serviced to for a long time. Zone One is large. I mean, it goes, it essentially goes to East Branch, Perkyon.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so it's everything in, so there's still a portion I'll call it east of this project over to Corry Roadish area. Meeting House Road, it doesn't have, that's not fully sewed yet.
So it's progress, but not complete.
Correct.
You mentioned horizontal bore?
Yes.
So we're not digging up trenches?
That's the goal.
What, how about service from home to the main?
Service from the home to the edge of the property, the cartway, the curb, yeah. So I guess to best answer that, that would be at the discretion of the individual property owner, the homeowner, how their respective plumbing contractor works, you know, toward accomplishing that.
Going back to the numbers again, I just wanted to double check.
Sure.
And change per unit. That is without calculating in the grant or you are?
That does not include the grant.
Okay, so it could be a third of that.
Yep.
Somewhere in there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we, we wanted to make sure we gave the presentation without the assumption of the grant fund.
The thirty-six thousand dollar number, that included the pump, grinder pump?
Yes.
And what was the approximate cost of?
I believe we had that on there for nine thousand dollars. Yeah.
Expected life for one of them?
They can, they can last a while with regularly scheduled maintenance out of their shoes, ten, fifteen, up to twenty years, you know? But uh, I would say that the routine maintenance part is essential to extend of the useful life. You know, having somebody do some level of annual maintenance and inspection and just taking a look.
On that line, and to follow up to John's question, the low pressure system I could think of in the township is in Providence One. The lower houses, they all have grinder pumps in them. I know there's random issues with the pumps, but I don't recall any significant problems or, you know, other than randomly pumps going out here and there.
Then the alarm, they usually have some sort of alarm setting and that can trip sometimes even though there is anything wrong and that can be annoying. The Blair. I do not know the answer to that. I apologize. Get the answer for you.
They're well.
So this is really just sewer, it's not?
This project exclusively sewer, yeah.
I, I noticed in the packet that there was a handful of homes that have registered systems that weren't failing. Is that are they gonna be forced to connect?
So personally, don't subscribe to the forced to connect. Usually the language will state in the event of property ownership transfer at that point in time would be a triggering event for a connection to be required.
It lasts one for the one board supervisor meeting, I think, or to the other project, the other end of the township that the supervisor was talking about. Forced connection versus non-forced connection. I think they came to something similar to what you're saying there. People wouldn't be forced now, but if there's a change in ownership.
Right. Yeah, the, the, the two things that I've seen in a few different places. Number one is that triggering event I talked about, a change in ownership. You may not be forced to connect right now, but if you sell your house, yes. The other part of it is how far away from that connection does your home sit back? I, is it, you know, way back removed from the property where the cost to run that ladder? So, you know, again, the amount of feet, actual footage needed to run the lateral out of the home has been, I've seen also determinant factors.
Somewhat consistent.
Yeah, down in Hidden Valley, they're all relatively small lots. There's a couple of the lots that go up along County Line Road that are larger.
All right, so what, what do you need from us tonight?
Would need your approval, your, your motion to accept the special study, so we can have CKS move forward the process in that the planning commission would approve it, so that we go to the board of supervisors.
Thoughts? Yeah, I think your, your recommendation would include that the project is consistent with the Act five thirty-seven plan and they recommend approval of the special study.
Before we do that, is there any public comment or question on this project? Yep. Hal?
Sharma.
Actually, we actually do it. Heard anybody pull it out?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, when you actually get the grinder pump installed, there's a manual and the plumbing contractors have access to that information. There's just regular routine maintenance and things that you can do to your grinder pump to help its lifespan and help extend its useful lifespan. So as opposed to an annual physical inspection of it, which you could also say is the case, there's just some things, some tips and tricks that help extend the useful life. So it can be anything to, you know, the actual. Oh, yeah, I mean, the list of things to not flush is never ending. Yeah, and the grease is the number one factor. A lot of times what we see is improper disposal of grease, you know, is the number one culprit because it solidifies over time and then can't pass through. But the other thing to take into consideration many times is tree roots. You know, underground infiltration of tree roots, things of that nature. If you have anything that's planted close by, can potentially crack the plastic, wrap its teeth around, sink in and affect and crush and break the plastic underground.
Bow, it's only one way to the, if somebody pump goes on to come into your house?
So you can get your lateral and the terminology of that is gonna escape me at the moment. I apologize, but essentially works with a plunger as a stop. Backflow preventer. But I would assume that would be in accordance with anything that West Rock Hill Township had in their plumbing code. As to whether
Yeah, most
traps or
Typically on those setups.
Backflow.
Yeah, there's a check valve or backflow.
Check valve. Thank you.
Sometimes there's, sometimes there's a second one on, on the house side of the pump, but there's always one on the street side because you're counting on not one pump doesn't push all the flow through the system. It's you inject yours, whatever that dose is fifty, sixty gallons, and then the next person does, and the next person does, and it effectively slowly works its way through the system. So there's always sitting water in there. It's not always moving.
Yes, I need your name and address, please.
Um, no. No. I would have to check with the specific manufacturer as far as what happens there in that situation.
Not that I'm aware of. I think, I think right in the beginning when the houses were first constructed, there was a tank or two that overflowed, but I think that was just someone not paying attention to the fact that it wasn't working. Uh, and to answer your other question, the grinder pump itself is in almost like an eighteen inch diameter pipe. It would look like a pipe set up on end. And so there is some storage volume within that that would get you a day or so probably.
Yeah, sorry. It's not a full-blown holding tank, but yes.
They got it repaired, but yeah, I think the problems we had was either alarm didn't go off or Pearson didn't pay attention to it. And then it overflowed, but I think I heard of that once. And that's gotta be twenty years now with that development.
The other thing with that too is if you have a household generator, plug it into that, and if you don't, if you want a well, your well pump's not gonna have any power either. So you're kind of nothing coming in and nothing.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can't speak to the exact code of ordinances here at the township, but you know, depending upon the size, location, anything that's involved with each respective property, that thousand dollar figure is a ballpark estimate. Certainly, if you have any kind of special circumstances, it could run higher and, you know, maybe contractor estimate comes back and it's, it is, you know, more than that.
Yeah, typically the health department looks for you to not only cut the pipe off to the house, but open the tank, crush the bottom, so it doesn't hold water anymore and fill it up with stone backfilling. You're not necessarily removing the tank and all the equipment.
Yeah, and that's why I pointed to the original point about if the tank has to be removed. I don't know, I can't speak to the cost of that, but in our scenario here, to crush it, beat it up and pack it with stone, the cost really goes back to the cost material.
Anyone else? All right, so someone wanna make a motion? To whatever Steve said.
Back to him, sir.
I will. There, there were three parts, correct?
Consistency with Act five thirty-seven plan, recommend approval of the special study area. This was only two. Unless you need something else.
If I do, I'll reach out.
I'll make a motion that to recommend that the report is consistent with Act five thirty-seven and to recommend approval.
Approval of the plant, of the, of the plant.
Thank you.
Hold on a second there. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. And Pat's back next week. If you guys have any additional questions or something you wanna ask when you get out of here, you forgot, just send me an email. Let me know. I'll be happy to reach out to you. Get that information back to you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Wawa. Give us a second to regroup here, please. Give us a second to regroup here, please. Gave us too many papers. We're getting there. Good, alright, go ahead.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Julie Von Spreckelson from the law firm of Eastburn and Gray here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As you may recall, we were last before the planning commission in August of this year, at which time we reviewed the preliminary final land development plans for the project, which proposes a lot line change between the properties located at thirty sixty and thirty sixty eight Old State Road. And then the construction of a Wawa convenience store with fuel dispensing facilities and associated parking, lighting, landscaping, stormwater management improvements to be located at the corner of State Road and Meeting House Roads, and that is considered Lot One. Lot Two was going to remain in its current ownership and retain the existing improvements on that property. And as you may recall, at the meeting in August, I provided extensive background on this project because this project has been ongoing since August of two thousand and twenty-two. And that's when we submitted uh sketch plans. And the sketch plans were reviewed a number of times by the planning commission and the board of supervisors. That culminated in the board of supervisors adopting a resolution that extended the hours of operation for this use to twenty-four seven with some conditions attached. We then proceeded to the zoning hearing board, we needed some dimensional relief. We obtained those variances from the zoning hearing board in April. That's when we then submitted the preliminary final land development plans that were reviewed by the planning commission in August. And when we were before you in August, we went through great detail about all the improvements that were proposed with regard to this project. That included extensive, and I mean extensive, road and traffic improvements that are associated with this project as well. We discussed and addressed all the review letter comments and the township consultant's review letters, and we went through our waiver requests. At that time, we had asked for a recommendation, but the planning commission was not inclined to grant the the um recommendation at that point. Wanted to see revised plans that address the review letter comments. With the planning commission, what you did do though, that we appreciated was you gave us um a recommendation on the number of oversized parking spaces. That was one of the conditions of the resolution the board adopted, that we had to provide sufficient number of oversized parking spaces. And so we showed our plan that showed seven oversized parking spaces and the planning commission recommended that that was sufficient. We went to the board of supervisors the next week and they confirmed that seven spaces was sufficient for this site. So we revised the preliminary final land development plans, resubmitted in November. And we have received review letters from the township traffic engineer dated December fifth and from the township engineer dated December seventh. Um, with regard to the township engineer's review letter, I'd say it's a very clean letter. Steve's here, he can uh, he can chime in. Um, it's, they're mostly statements acknowledging compliance. Um, there's also some comments relating to outside agency permits and approvals that are required. And then there's administrative items that we need to accomplish, um, which includes uh land development agreements, um, providing opinion of probable construction cost, uh, providing legal descriptions for right of way, that type of thing. So there's very, very few planned cleanup items. They're minor and they're all will comply. There's only two discussion items in that letter, and that's relating to sidewalk and road widening. And if you recall with regard, and let me direct your attention to comment eight on page two of Steve's review letter. Um, that discusses the sidewalks. And we did discuss it at the last meeting, we were requesting a waiver from providing sidewalks because there's no sidewalks in the vicinity and they'd really be sidewalks going nowhere. Um, but the planning commission said that you wanted to see some sidewalks, especially along Meeting House Road. Um, so we did revise the plan, and as you can see on the revised plan there, we're showing sidewalk along Meeting House Road that then turns and comes down the side of the property and Sean is going to be Vanna White tonight for me. Very much appreciate it. And that's what the planning commission had requested in particular because of potential future development in that area with some warehouses and such. Um, so that's what's being provided, so now we're only looking for a partial waiver from the sidewalk requirement so that we can provide the sidewalk as shown on the plan, so get a waiver from providing it elsewhere.
Is this the location that we had talked about putting sidewalk? I don't, I don't remember, I I thought we were going up Meeting House, but I I could be mistaken.
Well, we can't go up Meeting House, and let me explain to you why. So if we go up Meeting House, that's proposed lot two, we don't own that lot and we wouldn't be able to construct it on that lot. In addition, um, there's existing improvements that would make it almost impossible because they're encroaching into the right of way as they exist, and those improvements are going to remain.
I, there's a barn that that's right up the edge of the road there.
So it would be.
We had some discussion, I don't remember how much we had at the meeting or had it privately of of you know, since they have that whole open area in the back of the site, we still get up to Old State Road without going straight up the right of way.
The uh, the minutes stated that we supported or several members uh, supported the installation of the sidewalk along the frontages of the wall of Wawa site.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, at the end, I I was one of those folks and my feeling was was uh along State Road. That's as as stated in the minutes.
I saw, um, well, I thought as the discussions went further along, that the the preference was because of the potential future development.
I can only speak to myself personally, just the the feel of the lot and and the as it was a cornerstone, if you will, and and the first of who knows where the development's going to go after this point. Um, at least in my mind, and this is just my personal opinion, my vision, I I I felt I I envisioned sidewalks along State.
There any issue Sean with putting on State? Because I think, you know, honestly, our preference, if there's not an issue along State, we'd prefer to just put it on the Wawa frontage and not meander through and connect up to Old State. But there was discussion that that was really what was much preferred, so that's why we were trying to accommodate. But I think it's.
We certainly could, I think, um, looking at it. I I think, you know, part of the concern there was just ending a sidewalk on one lot.
Yeah.
When there's not other activity in the area.
It has to start somewhere though.
I mean, much prefer that.
Is that a crosswalk?
We do, yeah, there's one crosswalk.
So we, do we have sidewalk going on your property to that crosswalk?
There's sidewalk along the front edge of Meeting House.
It is all along the front of Meeting House.
Yeah.
On Lot One.
So that crosswalk won't.
Right, okay. And there's no sidewalk on State Road?
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I I remember all the discussion, I I thought part of it was due to uh, where the parking, is there parking on along State Road?
No.
There's not?
No, nothing is being proposed over on the remainder of Lot One on Old State.
Okay.
Lot Two, again, those existing improvements will remain.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Andy on the State Road frontage sidewalk. Thought that's where the conversation was going momentum.
And I think that, like I said, the applicant would much prefer that as well, I.
But I think we're talking.
I think that would be challenging.
You're saying the applicant would prefer only doing it on the frontage of Meeting House and on State. I don't, you're saying you'd like it on State Road, but would you still want the sidewalk through the back parcel of?
That's what I said, I mean, I prefer it on State Road, not Old State. But can they do both, could they run that?
That's what I thought, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same extent of.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, look, we were doing that, you know, the connection up to Old State because we thought that that's what was preferred. Um, it wasn't preferred for us, but we thought that's what it was preferred with the township, that was some direction we received. But obviously, I I mean, if we can, I think it would make sense to just put it on the frontage where we're doing the improvements. We're not doing any improvements over on Old State. Nothing, no improvements at all, so to have it meander through the nice beautiful green area is not ideal. I agree with it. We went that direction because we thought that's what the direction of the of the township was.
My recollection is that you wanted to wave State Road urban sidewalk or sidewalk. And in instead of doing a fee in lieu of, we kind of created that area for the sidewalk going to Old State. Created that wave for sidewalk going to State Road rather. Does that make sense? Does that sound right to you?
Yes.
But I'm I'm pretty sure that's the discussion we had, I I think you were looking for a waiver for Old State or for State Road, I'm sorry. Uh, for sidewalk.
On State originally because of the grading issues.
Right, and that's when we came up with the idea of running the sidewalk up to Old State. And instead of taking fee in lieu of for the waiver for State Road, you would install the sidewalk going up to Old State. I'm pretty sure that's how the conversation started and how how it proceeded.
That's, which is what we're showing now.
Yeah.
So is that what the preference is?
Right. Uh, what you're saying, you'd rather have it on State Road now, when when you're originally asked for a waiver for for curb on sidewalk on State Road.
Well, have the developer come up and tell me, tell you exactly what the applicant's preference is.
Good evening, Mike, uh, Mike Cooley, I'm with the Propco Group. And I I think what we're trying to do is is accomplish, you know, what the board's requesting essentially. So that's what we we showed is instead of placing the sidewalks on on State, we did the connection from our property to Old State. I think it, we would prefer not to do both. So we would either do them on State and remove the sidewalks cutting through essentially private property where there are some concerns of people, you know, loitering or hanging out on on, you know, a property that will be leased by Wawa versus in a public right of way. So that is somewhat of a concern of ours. So we are willing to do what you requested, but we've referred not to do both, basically.
I, let's start with the um, the crosswalk, it's shown crossing State Road, that Meeting House Road. On your side, where would a pedestrian go from there?
Well, I think essentially the concern was, as Sean mentioned, just globally in in redevelopment projects, where the tendency not to want to install sidewalk to the, to nowhere, I know you say someday it's a problem. But NDOT does have this uh as one of their safety points as well. Where we, with this crosswalk, we're both in the sidewalk, starts right at the connection of the crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
And it comes down Meeting House Road.
Okay.
So that that will be crosswalk right into the sidewalk along.
And nothing along State Road?
Right now, there's nothing proposed along State Road via the recommendation that we interpreted in my way.
Because there's no sidewalk to connect into as you continue down State Road. And it's just residence down there.
Who would be responsible for maintenance on the sidewalk uh, going up to Old State? Would that be Wawa's responsibility?
I mean, typically, uh, maintenance falls on the property on a sidewalk, so uh, in this case, it would be along, on private property.
It would be on your private property?
Yeah.
Correct, Lot One.
Lot One. But it's near the property. The plum property.
Correct. And I think there was some concern that Steve expressed too about that.
Yeah, if we if we keep that scenario, I just suggested moving it a little bit further away from the property line.
Gotcha.
People aren't tempted, and you know, put some of the trees that are there proposed there anyway, maybe plant them on the other side of the walk or be a tree in the shrub or something, to provide the visual barrier where the property line is.
And are there existing sidewalks on Old State Road on that side of the street?
No.
No.
So. So the sidewalk would go through this open space area and it's a dead end and it's Old State Road.
Well, they're proposing to connect it to the corner.
It goes in.
Turned.
There's no other existing in that area.
But then it would dead end there.
And with that air and the the discussion partially came from catty corner from that, from the plum house. We have a sketch plan for another where. So.
Yes.
That that's, you know, was the genesis of the conversation of connecting the different developments together.
Did we originally talk about going up the east side of Meeting House?
Yeah, there's discussion about that too.
Yeah, but there's a building on that side.
Alright.
Yeah. That's an issue that has to be tackled because I'm sure with the warehouse project, which we already suggested with the warehouse sketch plan, that they try to do more road improvements up to that property and we'd have to deal with the one or more of the barns at that time.
One box too.
Yeah, yeah, you know, both sides of this.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was my initial recollection of trying to run up the the other side of Meeting House. Pretty connectivity down there, or else.
Right, unfortunately.
The substrctions right.
My my reaction is that, I mean, people typically would expect to see a sidewalk on the street, on the street, the sidewalk kind of going through an unknown area, I guess, after people are used to it, I mean, okay, that's 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 the way to go, but it's a walking path, it's a walking path. But unless you know that it's there, it's not intuitively obvious that it's a sidewalk to somebody that has a walk. So not during the war and how much it used to be. That's what people.
But yeah, I would say once once the warehouse goes in, it'll eventually be discovered, viewed. It's uh not there now, so we don't. Um, yeah, I mean, this isn't, this isn't this as good a scenario as what I was picturing uh from our our previous discussion. Um, you know, as John said, he, you know, typically see sidewalk on the street, that's that's that was the effect I think we were going for. If we can't pull that off, I don't know that we need this sort of walking path now. Um, if uh, State Road is is feasible to sidewalk.
Yes.
It's just me, what do you got?
I would agree with them. Yeah, I mean, I remember our conversation about having access up Meeting, uh, Meeting House and that whole thing, but yeah, where it was, I don't know that we came up with something like this, but then also, you know, the State Road frontage. That would be my preference, the State Road. In my mind, that's kind of what I had when we talked about the frontage, certainly on State and Meeting House.
We'll make that change.
So we'll revise the plan to show sidewalk, Steve, do you have any any further comment on this?
No, that's your preference. We could work on that sidewalk issue when we work on widening the rest of Meeting House Road.
There you go. Alright, so we're in agreement that we'd rather see the sidewalk on State and not up the back of the property.
Excellent, yep, that's that's great.
That's one.
Okay, that's one, the only other is with regard to the road widening and that's comment nine on page three of Steve's review letter. Um, so this is again a partial waiver request um, because we are going to provide the required widening along Meeting House of Lot One. Um, because we are going to provide the required widening along Meeting House of Lot One. But we're looking for the waiver for the remainder of Meeting House and then Old State. There's no improvements being done there. Again, we can't even widen. It's not our property on Lot Two. There's many reasons, but we are providing the widening that's required along our frontage of Meeting House.
It makes sense to me. Is there something we're missing here?
No, it's, it's the same issue we just talked about with the sidewalk. Difficult to build unless you build it, the winding right up to the side of the barn, which is not desirable.
And Steve, when you say fourteen feet, you're assuming like eleven feet for a traffic lane and three foot for a shoulder?
No, well, first fourteen feet is right out of the ordinance. It's twenty, twenty-two, twenty-eight foot curb to curb, fourteen foot half width. It's really based on a twelve-foot lane and PennDOT requires if you have curb on the road to set it two foot back from the edge of the road. So that's where the fourteen originally came from.
So you want to use a decelerated lane or a right-hand turn lane going into the Wawa from Meeting House Road?
No. No, and I, I don't think their traffic study supported that. Uh, there's not that level of traffic on. If it, it were two main roads, you would have potentially turn lanes at, at both entrances. If you just have turn lanes onto Meeting House Road. Put nothing at the. At the entrance in the wall.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with.
Okay.
What you have. Yeah, all right with us?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on to the township, uh, traffic engineer's review letter, I want to note that the traffic impact study was provided to both the township and to PennDOT. Um, and that PennDOT did approve the traffic study. And the comments in both PennDOT and the township traffic engineer's review letter are either will comply or will be addressed to the satisfaction of PennDOT and the township. There are a few comments that, um, require coordination between PennDOT and the township traffic engineer. But those comments and coordination should not affect the layout of the roadway improvements or the access proposed. So we'll just continue to work with PennDOT and the township traffic engineer as we move forward with HOP plans. And our HOP permit. And that's it.
Steve, was there anything in your review that?
Just a few questions, I guess. Um, number, number three, I don't know if we talked about it at the planning commission stage or it might've came up at a board meeting. They have excess, excess parking, at least more than what the minimum required for the ordinance is. There were some questions whether or not there would be future, uh, spaces reserved for electric charging stations or not. I don't remember if it was ever shown on the plan, but I didn't see it this time.
We did. We talked about it at the planning commi- commission. I think it was both planning commission and the board wanted to see electric charging stations as well. So yes, there are being, they are being provided. Sean, you want to show?
So that, that kind of usually when, when Wawa does maybe. So we're, we're now looking maybe at putting them outside. Possibly another alternative is putting them in the four, four, on either side of the landscape island, but that's a lot more.
Do you have any room in the area behind the building, like is it the lower end of Lot One there? Down where the trees though, like up at, uh, six sixty-three, they're putting charging stations kind of behind the Wawa. You know, like whole separate area back. Uh, back there. Well, like in, like I said, on six sixty-three, I mean, it's basically a separate area behind, like the lots all there. It's kind of behind there.
So if they're converted into charging stations, does that, uh, eliminate the use as a parking space? And is that, are we still above?
But that was the concern that they're more of a longer-term proposition. If someone truly were there to charge, fully charge their car, that they could sit there for quite a while. I think the discussion that we, conclusion we came to get seventy-three parking spaces, sixty-one are required by ordinance. So.
You're already.
Well, you know, spaces that are over the minimum and if they're talking eight and that seems to fall right, which is, so.
You have anything else, Steve?
Um. I, I think in your packet, you, you have on that online packet, the, um, building elevations?
We do.
I, I just did a description of it. I know we didn't really have that information before, other than, you know, visualizing other facilities, but. Plant commission should at least. Get what you're proposing. And as, as we said, height is not quite an issue here. The. Roof on the, the fuel canopy is twenty foot, eight inches. The parapet around the. Perimeter building is twenty-two feet, six inches and that peaked roof. And the feature over the entrance is thirty-three feet. That's close to our maximum thirty-five, but everything is under.
Do you have a, an elevation of the, uh?
We do. I think that's.
It's not the shade canopy, it's a.
Right. All right. You got anything else, Steve?
I probably want to again look through the waiver request.
Oh yeah, I mean.
We'll do that separately.
Right.
Um.
On your review.
Yeah, traffic impact study. Um, I agree with what Mr. Burkeless said. That's in the progress. I just read PennDOT's latest review letter. That seemed more technical in nature, not changing the turn lanes or.
Right.
Thing. Sidewalk we dealt with. I mean, just to be clear for you, at some point you're going to need, I assume, a separate stormwater, uh, utility permit for an HOP. Township requires you enter into an O and M agreement. We require that before we'll sign the HOP, so. Something you might want to ask for sooner than later, so you don't have to wait. You don't have to wait when that.
Mary will provide it.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, you, you, you need to make the request and then let's go. Landscape, and we talked about landscaping a lot on prior. You know, the shading calculations, they gave us the new calculations. Nineteen trees, give or take short on the shading. They are proposing the extra concrete spaces around the building.
Right.
All concrete plus.
And the roof.
The roof. At forestation, point eight, nine acres. That's the difference of what they're not, they're not making up. But as you could see from the, the original rendered plan, there's quite a few trees that they are planting in that rear area, which. Effectively.
So there fee in lieu for the shortage?
There could be. I mean, what we've done. Previously on, on other projects, we've always asked and not necessarily at this level, you, you make your recommendations on, on the, on the waivers. But the board always expects to see a cost estimate of any of the waived items. And then they can be compared against extra improvements or if they're offset by extra improvements. And then the board and staff would have that discussion about what items may or may not actually need a. You know, a contribution for. Management, I think, is in good shape now.
And we got a new waiver request tonight.
Telford, Telford Turand Water, have you submitted to Telford at this point? Okay. Yeah. As, and you know, you just said that and I remember seeing a letter from Pat.
Yeah.
So, so that is in process too. The MPDS permit, has that been submitted? Fire company, we did get comment back or no comment back from the fire company. So it's non-issue. Um, the signage, I just threw that in there because you did have it on some of your plans. Technically, that's not being approved under the land development plan, no matter if you show it or not, you'll have to.
Yeah, permits. Yep.
You'll have to get your separate zoning applications.
Yep.
It, uh, yeah.
That was some zoning relief we did receive for this.
That's all I have. So waivers is to make sure we're all.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the waivers. What was, what was added?
The only thing added was the very last one with regard to the road widening, widening. So it's number thirteen. That was it. We already spoke about that.
Right. All right. You want to just run it through this with us?
Again? Okay, sure. Yep. We did go through it last time, but yeah, sure. Uh, so the first one is a waiver from section three sixty-five, thirty-eight A two to allow driveways on corner lots and reverse frontage lots to gain access from both the street of higher classification and lower classification. In lieu of access solely to the street of lower classification. Um, it's requirement in the zoning ordinance that the uses E eight and E, E nine have separate accessways. So that's why we're providing them on both streets.
I, I think we did in.
We did.
In the overall picture, this is sort of, uh, an ideal situation whenever reverse funded lot with a. High volume road and low volume road, you try to have the access to the low volume.
Right.
That's not really conducive to this type of development.
Next waiver is from three sixty-five, thirty-nine A to not install curbing along both sides of state road, Meeting House Road and Old State Road. We talked about that.
Yeah, just the clarification. You are providing the curbing on.
Meeting House.
The technicality that they're not doing it on the other side, right? You don't always have that exact waiver, but that's what they're asking for, the other side, not their side.
A waiver from three sixty-five, forty A to allow no sidewalks or pedestrian bicycle pass along. Well, now we've changed that, uh, this evening, so we will provide the sidewalk along state road. So it's just along Old State Road. The next is a waiver from three sixty-five, forty-nine F two C. And that's to permit a maximum width of entrance and exit drives of thirty feet with maximum curb cut dimensions of one hundred fifteen point one feet. And one hundred eighteen point nine feet in lieu of the permitted fifty-four feet at the curb line. And that's PennDOT standards. We need to comply with PennDOT standards. That's the reason for that waiver request. A waiver from three sixty-five nineteen, and this goes with three sixty-five twenty, which is the next one. And that's to allow preliminary final submission rather than just separate submissions because we designed it to final plan standards. So number seven is a waiver from three sixty-five, uh, dash nineteen D. And that's to permit, um, a plan showing all existing features located within the track boundaries and all applicable information immediately adjacent to the track. In lieu of the required information to be shown within a hundred feet of the track boundary. I think those are typical waivers. That's typical waiver. Request.
They've shown enough information for my purposes.
Uh, the next is a partial waiver from three fifty-two dash eighteen point C point two to permit HDPE storm sewer pipes in lieu of reinforced concrete pipes.
That would be on, on problem.
Correct.
Same with nine.
Yep. And that's to permit, uh, pipe sizes smaller than a minimum eighteen inch diameter.
And that's primarily the roof collection system.
The next is a waiver from three sixty-five dash forty-three A to permit cut or fill greater than four feet of excavation or backfill for the installation of a retaining wall.
I think I had a summary in my part of the letter that it's well balanced. I suppose you could get it balanced.
The next is a waiver from three sixty-five dash forty-one B. And that's to allow exception from parking area landscaping requirements. I think Steve just addressed that. Um, in his discussion, along with the next, uh, waiver, which is with regard to reforestation requirements.
But yeah, we talked about thirteen at the beginning. Um, so anybody have any concerns with waiver requests or comparable with them? Need to vote on that, man. You know what? We're, we're pretty close to getting to the end of this. I'm going to open a Florida public comment before we go any further. Anyone have any comment on this project? Yes, sir.
Asso will be provided.
What's your name again? I'm sorry. Yeah, Dan.
When you're turning right on two.
Yeah. So we, and I require some busy time lanes, which again, we once, I think I've implied, we've run. Comfortably hit what's on there, um, make sure that the big guy be provided in such appropriate. And especially considering the fact that Wawa had a ten building. Correct. And one of the things that also that it takes, that that stop wall is without. Oh, well, I don't believe, uh, that right come on web will be available there. Um, signal is hopefully. But I would suspect that based on what is being done, I don't believe that.
Right. It's, it's not going to be an extra lane, as you said, but the, the return radius is, is moved back away from state road and widened out. And then there's a flare on state road to get you back in. So it should, it should be significantly improved from the current condition. Correct. Yep.
Chris looking at the picture. So since we had the question about putting sidewalk. Southwest side of Old State. That is actually buying all of. Eleven, are you buying half of the property or all the property? Another thing you see, we're in.
Correct.
They're buying half of the current lot?
It's thirty-sixty.
Lot is all the way down meeting house. Correct. You're buying half the lot, you're buying the entire lot. If it's trying to enter a lot.
So.
He thought about subdivision with the. He's buying the other half. Okay, I'm buying, so you're buying half of it now.
Well, it's.
And then we're buying the rest of the property. This is even like.
Correct.
Half of. The strip that currently goes down.
Right, so there'll be a lot line adjustment plan in conjunction with this that'll be recorded first. I mean, it may be the same day, but.
Yeah.
Recorded first to establish the lot and then the land development plan.
Hey, anyone else? Alright, moving forward, um, you got a motion to recommend approval of waivers?
I think the motion to recommend the approval of waivers.
That's subject to the.
Subject to State Road sidewalk change. Subject to the State Road sidewalk change. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Alright, you got your waivers. Um, what else are you looking for?
Looking for recommendation for preliminary final, please.
Well, as I said, please. What's that, conditional?
Well, yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Correct.
Well, conditional on everything.
Good to go with a conditional. I mean, there's a lot of.
If there's no other layout improvement issues, yeah.
We don't have any more outside agency input.
Not, that's going to change the look of the plan.
If you guys are comfortable with it, I just want to make a motion to recommend preliminary conditional preliminary, preliminary final.
I will make said motion to recommend preliminary. Condition, conditional preliminary final plan approval.
Discussion. I'll second it. Now discussion. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay, good luck. Good night. Howdy. Alright, Butter Creek. You have the floor.
Uh, good evening, I'm Ken Justice and engineer, uh, representing, uh, the Butter Creek subdivision. We, uh, this is probably our fifth or sixth iteration of this plan that you've seen. Yeah. So, um, this latest one. Uh, Steve and I, Steve Bowden and I had discussed the, uh, his comments in his letter regarding, uh, the engineering, uh, aspects that are still remaining and, uh, um, as I discussed with Steve, we'll be able to comply with those. Um, there's some legal issues that our attorney unfortunately couldn't make it here tonight that, uh, will be working out. And, uh, we able to go to the next plan? I can go, no more? I'm sorry, one more? Where are we here? The, uh, proposed plan. Let's get one. So instead of the, uh, thirteen lots that we had and then the twelve lots that we had and instead of the, um, the long, um, road with the lots coming off of that. Now we're just going with five lots with, uh, driveways. Six lots, I'm sorry, with driveways.
Okay.
It's.
I'm trying to find the.
Should be the second page.
Alright. Why don't, uh, you did do a, uh, response to review letter?
Uh, that's a response from the prior.
Uh, that's a prior, yep, yep, okay. Alright, you have the September review letter in front of you?
I have the, the December review letter.
December.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, would you mind just going through it?
Sure.
Um, well, you know what? If their will complies, just say their will complies. You don't have to read through it if it's a will comply.
I, I guess before we get started, is everybody comfortable or you had a chance to look at it, you understand the lot configurations?
Yeah.
And that, like, some of them look like lane lots, but they're not because they have frontage on Butter Creek Road, but they have the driveway access to Camp Rock Hill Road. There are only two true lane lots by ordinance that only have the access.
But the shared driveways, right?
That's. The shared driveways are proposed, so that, that's a question that's going to come up here. I just want to make sure everybody understands the layout and where we, where we are now compared to. That's why.
Yeah, I am, yeah. Guys comfortable? Four here, like an overview?
My concerns with the shared.
Shared.
Yeah, I think that's going to be everybody's. Alright, well, that comes up pretty quick, so.
Well, that was, item one was more of a statement just saying, uh, shared driveways.
Right.
Um, item two was dealing with the, uh, the floodplain. Uh, Steve and I talked about just, uh, correcting it.
Yeah, yeah, there was some back and forth on the floodplain. It's not a particular problem, it's not going to impact the lots at all, it's just some clarification. To do, because it's an approximate floodplain, it's not, it doesn't. FEMA map doesn't give elevation.
Basically, I took the FEMA map online and blew it up and superimposed it on our drawing and tried to get it to line up the best I could and Steve and I talked about just making sure elevations on both side are even. Uh, item three was about the, the driveway going the lots five and six. Um, doing some calculations on the steep slope there, it will comply. Um, item four was dealing with the drainage easement. Um, it's the same easement that was on, um, that was agreed upon two versions ago of the approved subdivision plan. Um, it just needs to be slightly modified to coincide, coincide with the property lines. So it doesn't appear to look like it's going on someone else's property. So that's a will comply. Um, item five is about the existing barn. Um, and that's something the attorney's going to um, respond to.
So there, that's, that's just a barn, there's no, no dwelling.
Uh, but if someone buys a lot and wants to keep it, it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? That was, that was what, Camp Rock Hill camp?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. And you use that for equipment and whatnot now?
Right, and, and that, while he owns the property, that's fine, it's the way it's been used. The question, the only question that I bring it up for is once, once it's ever sold off and someone wants to build a house there, then they'll have to conform zoning of what's allowed accessory to whatever house that they live in.
Can't write your barn back.
Maybe you could, I don't know.
Item six and seven, I was going to lump together because that's just, uh, making sure that the right tables and added to the drawing sheets and that's a will comply. Um, made a mate is the shared driveway issue. We can either talk about this now or we get through everything else and come back.
Let's talk about it now.
Okay.
So. Obviously, we don't really particularly like shared driveways. Um, I've personally seen results of shared driveways that were negative. I'm, I'm not in favor of saying hearing myself talk.
Thought that there was someone else that was online.
No.
Alright.
Problem. There we go. Okay. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I'm, I'm not in favor of shared driveways. Ordinance suggests the same.
Yeah, I've had some experiences with knowing people with shared driveways. Um, what's the option? Like what, Steve, I thought you said there's some leeway there for?
Well, I guess we've gone back and forth on this for, for so long and can you fit separate driveways in those lanes that you've created? You just would need waivers from other setback requirements or not? I, I think I took that from a prior letter, so I don't know that I double checked that.
But on one, two, then, and three, four, I mean, you'd have four driveways going out. Alright.
The main issue is they just weren't shared driveway. So I understand the thoughts on this shared driveway. My experience is also as ten and I, but it was within the board. The part of the ordinance says try to do the least amount of least amount of, uh, grading, least amount of trees, least amount of everything. Least amount of stormwater created. So I was putting two driveways, or separating two driveways because there might be a problem with future on private property. I don't understand that. Technically township has no. As I said, even one of the top one conversations we had. If, if me and my neighbor are fighting over our shared driveway and somebody comes to the town, why isn't it, isn't it township's response that part of the property is part of the property? And as long as they have, we can do right amount of land to the lone driveway separated. That is true with the end result. They will separate every one. So I understand what you're saying and I understand why we might not like them, but I I'm not sure I understand why. I understand and I like them if there's no resolution. This property has the resolution to make.
Do you agree with the, the amount of, uh, space that they have to put them in there? I mean, like, to where to put them in now as well?
Yes, there is space there, they'll just, they'll be very close together.
Right.
And it may or may not meet the five foot setback, I, I forget what you.
We could, we can make it work.
Alright, because you don't have them at twenty foot now, don't you have them at fifteen, fifteen? Or by, by twenty. So yes, they have the room with the five foot separation that you could build separate driveways. What Tim was referring to earlier, you did. The prohibition of shared driveways only made it into the code with the, with the latest clarification.
Yep.
That was not in the code at the time when the plans were first submitted. It was always something that you did not prefer. But it wasn't, you know, it's not a waiver.
Is there anything you could be put in to any kind of agreement or anything about? You know, hey, look, you got shared driveways, no fight, no riddle.
Well, I mean, we generally would always ask for, I mean, the language of a shared driveway easement, because they'll have to provide an easement because you're, you're going over each other's property. And usually those shared driveway easements have maintenance provisions in them. Uh, you know, the bottom line is people don't always get along and whether or not they should come to the township, they do. And that, that's been the township's problem is they do show up here. Uh, because they don't necessarily want to hire an attorney or, or. Stay on one side. But again, you know, as Tim had said, there, there's a lot of shared driveways that have never been an issue in the. And, but then, then there's the several that have been problematic from. And that happens in every township. Right, again, it's more often than not, it comes down to a maintenance issue. Some ways not participating in the maintenance or letting certain things go and they don't want to contribute to getting it repaved or something along those lines. And five and six too? Later.
And you looked at the idea in one of the iterations to create a loop road where you've got the two driveways coming in?
It's, I, I've explained it, what I explained before and, and I'm going to stick to it is. This lot right here, I'm sorry, it's not very clear. It's steep here, very rocky and I'm talking too exciting longer there. And trying to get in. It could be difficult to get a driveway, but it's doable to be added. But try to put it in twenty foot wide road right there. I think that loop goes against the county ordinance. Clearing up some of the prettiest land out there. And that's why we never really wanted to do that as an option, so we're looking at the driveway option here.
Favor of towns to be there. If I hold that, it's a lot longer. Um, and you get fringes and everything else. And the cost of building a road up. Um, to reduce the number of lots that would be here or that would be able to be done offset by the large amount of road and road insurance that would require.
But you already, you already pursued the cul-de-sac option. And the issue with the cul-de-sac was it was too long. So now you've got shared driveways and that, there are issues with that. I understand the cost issue with just making a big loop. But if the other issues aren't acceptable in the township, maybe you take another look at. Just as a suggestion.
Yeah, so we can.
I'm adding to that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just let. And in the professional handle that, because I really don't know what to say. And then the professional handle that because I really don't know what to say. Gone. The loop road is so intrusive. Destroys so much. And then we have other, that brings up another issue. We come out on Camp Rock Hill Road down in that hollow. That's not a great place for a road to come out. Um, right where. Where this comes out, that's, that's where the low spot in the road is.
But you've got, you've got a driveway.
Well, driveway is different than a road going out there.
I'm missing the subtlety of that, but. That's, I haven't been back there.
What's the difference between the two people's? Private cars coming out versus twelve car subdivision with a lot more cars?
Okay.
The only thing I'm understanding from you here is the only plan you liked has been the loop road. And we're trying to come up with a plan that's not the loop road and we keep coming back to the same issue here.
Like all that. That's why we changed. That easy lane.
Right.
Plus that's not an exception for a road out. Had a driveway coming out there.
Yeah, the old ones, that was a standalone lot with one driveway.
Right. Alright, so getting back on. Future separation of driveways. At that. For five and, what is it? Five and six. I mean, what's the feasibility of trying to, trying to get another driveway in with the. The natural resource problems you're having there?
So be. Drive that's a little bit locked. All you have to do is that five feet one side or both sides. Five feet both sides, because then they can drive on their own. You don't have to take the old out. Have five feet on the side. Literally, we need, somebody would need to add five foot driveway on the lane going at, at a day. And that. Five foot side driveway three. And then it is on their property. They don't allow each other's driveway. They don't want to talk to each other. If they want to make eight feet, seven feet wide on either side, they dig up two feet in between. They want to make ten feet wide and they go five feet in. How to see their place. They don't want to talk to each other.
For five and six.
All of them. All of them.
You, but could you do five and six right away? Like, could five and six be separate driveways? Is that? Like now, like versus?
They could. It doesn't make, yes, they could.
But what you said, it was fifty, what's the front fifty and a hundred and fifty? And the natural resources are further down at the, kind of after the split, right?
Backseat.
Well, the steep slopes are, yeah, yeah. So you come in and then split and that's where your steep slopes are, but.
Correct, I'm sorry.
They're up, it's. Barely. It, it's rocky while you have. But it's. Yeah, you could put, so five and six, you could probably do a non-shared driveway without too much. Problem. It's easier than the four. I, I was just, again, back to the four driveways running. Parallel all the way out the eighty foot. There's two going out within two hundred and whatever feet, right? Right. Yeah, I get it on the, on the eighty foot with the four, but the.
Okay, I understand now.
If you get two of them not to be. You know, shared driveways, it's. Something.
Any thoughts on this?
Nine. No, I mean, the, the, the two driveways coming in, I mean, essentially they're side by side. So the, the attempt to, to split up to do one and two together and, and, um. Three and four together is to. I guess. Limit that, uh, you know, just have. Two shared driveways instead of. Four all the way out is, I mean.
It, it, I mean, it's disturbance plus a. When we laid it out, you might even remember from one of the earlier ones, it just, it really looked like a spider coming down.
Right, right, right.
Just. And then, and then. Honestly, that, the, the gap between them. I think that would be more of a maintenance issue. Who's going to mow that? You mow two feet of one side and the other person has to mow two feet of the other and. Already fill it with stone and the weeds grow. I mean, it's.
I believe it's in the subdivision. Like a double check.
What about on, uh? For the shared driveway for what? Three and four, where it turns the corner there? How, like? Would. Man, they have it going out, you know, the eighty foot going all the way out to the road, but after that corner there, that's. How's that like, I mean? Property ownership wise, like.
One. Separate property line. Put there again and that property and then you go to work.
Okay, so they, that runs all the way, so that, okay, so that.
Yeah, where at that end, that should go into the basin.
Tim, the five foot is in the subdivision ordinance, in the driveway section of the subdivision.
Well. Red and pass. Why don't we, uh, why don't we circle back? Let's, uh, let's move forward in the review.
Okay. Number nine is a site distance calculation. Will comply. Uh, ten is submitting to the, uh. Uh, county for NPDS. Will comply with that as well. We. I'm kind of at the point where I don't want to submit that we have a project. Um. Uh, eleven and all the associated comments there, um. Uh, we had a separate consultant do the stormwater and, uh, I believe Steve and that consultant is ready. There was a separate letter with that.
Originally, there was a separate letter, but this is, it's boiled down to the item. It, it.
But that'll be.
Significant. Just, just for the planning commission's benefit, could you point out where the basin would be? So there's just one basin proposed. And, and the only caveat that I had. That you may have come across in here. That basin and the design is based on the building location shown on the plan.
Right.
These will ultimately be sold off as individual lots. Some other builder's going to come on, so we need to have some kind of note, notification on the plan. That should they not build the house in the location on the plan that they might have to do their own separate stormwater. Uh, facilities to accommodate. They don't drain into the base and that's on the plan.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Oh, certainly. Right. The issue is whether the construction will drain to the basin. Drain to the basin and it's a non, you know, it's covered. If it doesn't drain to the basin. We have to protect ourselves if you don't. But I mean, that, that, that's the one main comment in here. Otherwise. Your basic. O and M agreements and couple details. Right. Yeah. And then the old drainage easement that they had along the creek would get. In large to include the basin.
Well, it's with the sewage planning module and, uh, that also be submitted when we're to the point where. Have a project.
Yeah, that's another confusing item because all the testing was done years ago. Have to make sure that everything. Still works.
Um. Thirteen is an interesting one. The, uh. There's two parts to that. First, uh. Earlier where we talked about doing the site distance and where we're going to have the driveway for lots five and six. Um, that tree shouldn't come into question, but the, the bigger problem is that tree's not on our property. And. Uh, I, I see we, I should have talked to you about this before when I realized that, that I don't know how we could. Be directed to remove a tree on someone else's property.
Well, that's why I think you'll might have said the. Coordinate removal. I think we recognized that. Last time. Well, I, I think the first step is to, is to verify the site distances there and whether or not it's, it's an obstruction for the driveways. And. I, I pointed it out because it was a condition in the old, in the old. Yeah, if it's clearly not on the property, that would have to be revisited. For this approval.
Well, I believe that we, when we do the. The, the calculations you'll get back will show that.
Right. It might, it might be benefit to, you could show on the plan. Where the tree is. Right. Well, I mean, when you redraw, you know, when you resubmit the plan, actually physically show it so it's clear. Everyone where it is.
Uh, you know, one phone call. Once I cleared along Camp Rock Hill Road o- over on the, on this side of it. The road began, widened a little bit. The road became a superhighway. It's a cut through to three oh nine and that's okay, but now they don't slow down. The only thing that slows them down is the bend in that tree. And when it came up the first time, I said to Steve, I'm against taking that down now. I didn't realize what taking a few trees down. And opening things up would do. So. The tree has been there longer than the road, obviously. The tree has never been hit. And everybody knows that that tree's there that comes down the road for the most part, and that literally is the only thing that, so I think it's a safety feature, not a safety. Hazard. So that is one of my other reasons that I'm, I'm absolutely against taking that tree down. So, but that'll, that's up to.
Lots like this is. To the right.
Well, they have to verify whether it does or it doesn't.
Yeah, that's the concern.
That's one of the concerns. I, when we talked about this years ago. I think it was more just a traffic concern that it was so close to the edge of the road. It's been interesting.
Bigger now.
And we don't know who owns it because years ago I was having commented meeting that. The neighbor on the other side of Camp Rock Hill Road, which is Richland Township, he has told the board that he owns. The, one of the board members said at that time that name was the same. He owned it, so. I, I, I have no idea who owns that piece of land, because I know I own on the other side of Butter Creek Road, there's a little triangle of mine that goes over there. I'll never be able to use or do anything with it. He might own over there, which then it was probably not dead.
Well, if we could get the site distance information and the exact location of the tree, then maybe it'll. Be a non-issue.
I want to be, we'll call it to be continued.
Sure.
Uh, item fourteen is the waivers. Um, we're going to continue with that, except for, um, waiver E, but the street lighting. Uh, lampposts, since we're not doing a road. I believe that one. Doesn't qualify anymore.
Now, well, the detective has taken street lighting as even on existing roads and in past plans, they've asked for. Driveway lampposts on some of the more rural developments. So I think it's an item to be discussed in.
I was only bringing that up. There's no other driveway. Lights. Within half mile either side of. This property here. Um, number fifteen is will comply. Sixteen is will comply. Seventeen, uh. I guess that's what the attorney's going to work out, but that should. With the, uh. Financial security agreements. Um.
And this piece, it'd be a lot more limited than the prior projects.
Yes.
Basically stormwater and. An erosion control.
Eighteen will comply with the surveyor. Alright, nineteen will comply. And twenty will, same thing. It's, uh, going back to the county. Once we have a project, we'll take care of that.
Going back to the surveyor issue. I don't know, I know it's been talked about before, but I don't know if it's, if there's been a final. Word on that. Um, monuments as opposed to pins. Uh, concrete monuments is, I know the ordinance says they would like monuments. It used to be on the corners. Now it's inside. I do know we have a lot of, it's a heavily rock site and one of the outside monuments years ago. Literally landed on a big solid rock right down it and, and all the surveyor did was set the monument right there. Now that's no longer existing. What's the? What's the require, if we can't do monument in areas?
Practical interpretation is it's a concrete monument where they can be physically installed. If it's a rock, usually a drill hole or some other alternate demarcation, you just have to document that. When you, when we get the certification from the surveyor, he would have to document wherever he used anything altered. So if you could physically install it, you do. If it's a rocker, tree or something else. And you don't have to change existing pins.
Oh, no.
If there's an existing pin, like on your outbound boundary, that doesn't have to be changed.
There, there are some.
Okay, you're not asked to remove a marker, to put a new marker in. It's all new.
And item twenty one is just a general statement that more comments could be forthwith after. Next review.
Alright, I guess just, we didn't really touch on it. We've talked about it. And. Well, the plans are pretty complete. They weren't intended to be. All the bells and whistles and, and all the notes and things, because their, their effort was to really get. Uh, enough detail, you know, I'm not a sketch plan, but enough detail that you can make your decision. So they're comfortable in what direction and that they want to go and then. Uh, the plans would be finalized. Plus you get all those outside agency submissions. So we're not at the position that. This is here for plan approval.
Right.
I think. Yeah, it's looking for a pretty good. You know, feedback on whether this is a viable option for seed.
What are your other options for? Getting driveways into these lots? I, I mean, not necessarily these lots, we're getting driveways into lots on this property. Seen the cul-de-sac that we, that like, you have, you have a. You have the P loop in your pocket. You can do that. Um. There. The shared driveway thing is, it's. I don't, I don't particularly like it, as I said. You know, you gotta. You're gonna have four homes going up that eighty foot right away. It's not an ideal scenario in my mind. I understand that the restrictions that you're facing to get it, to get it in. Restrictions that you kind of created yourself when you did your other subdivisions. I'm just not a fan of the driveway layout. Sorry.
I mean, another way of looking at it, it's, it's a two lot cul-de-sac with no. It's got the same. The same issues that we were concerned about with long cul-de-sac.
And obviously there's no, there's no way to access from further. Well, I mean, serving.
I don't know. Personally, his plan's been here for so long. I mean, it's. And at that point in time, shared driveways weren't prohibited. There is the room to do shared driveways. So if there is tremendously or separate driveway, so there's a tremendous problem. There is a remedy. If it was handled in verbiage of a easement agreement. With the effort to make five and six separate driveways have these two. I mean, I personally am okay with that.
If five and six separate. How far back can I? I'd like to have the entrance bigger. Okay, or just want to stop at the ultimate right away. If it's gonna have to widen the road, obviously where these driveways are in the eighty foot stretch and probably about. Of the. Stretch is gonna widen out to the ultimate right away anyways. We are doing the road line. So we'd like to do this place right there and ultimate right away and.
I mean, ideally be separate. I mean, just separate. Just that, that's not.
To the road.
That's not an issue. At least there's two driveways that are now not shared.
But then what, the issues that you raised with putting in a twenty-eight foot road. What's different?
Well, you're up out of the, you're up at a steep slopes. I think the problem with twenty foot road is down into the steep slopes and all the boulder field down and below here.
There, there's other design requirements that have to be taken into consideration when it's a public road. That you wouldn't necessarily take into consideration for the driveway. The driveway. You could snake around trees and boulders on the way back to the house location. Which you wouldn't do with a twenty-eight foot bike road. You're going straight through. Eliminating everything that's in the way, filling in the steep slopes. So I mean, that, that's the real difference as far as disturbance to features. The separate driveways, you could meander them through the, through the site and void is. Many features.
Another part two went from twelve or thirteen lots down to six with much more space between them. Less dense development. We thought that might have been an option you'd like to see also as opposed to much denser development. Trust me, I'm trying here.
I, I understand. I understand, but I'm, my top issue is safe. I'm sorry to be pessimistic, but I think in today's society, if you've got opportunities for people to have conflict, they will find a way to have conflict. And you know, I think it's just a shared driveway. Just some point of time. Could be a problem that you could otherwise. It's just my personal opinion. Strong environmentalist. I believe in preserving the township's beauty. But if it's a choice between. You know, some conflict, somebody is trapped. They can't get out. They can't get in. There's a violent conflict. I mean, that's gotta be. And I've lived here for over forty years and. Shared driveway even ten years ago probably wouldn't have been an issue. Probably wouldn't even cross my mind it would be. Just watch the news.
If the. If there is the option to separate the driveways, how would that, how could that be written into the? I mean, I'm not, I'm not concerned about. Emergency access. As John say this, I think if they're going to. To avoid conflict, you know, if that's, if that's an option. I, I might be agreeable to that if we can get that into your deed. Separate these five and six, at least mitigate some of these. I, I, I think I'd be, I'd be all right.
Yeah. I mean, by regulation, the private road is supposed to be designed for public road standards. So there's not. A really a relief with going to a private road option. And we've had the THP development. That's going to be private roads. Those are private roads designed to public road standard.
You got thoughts, Andy?
I, I empathize. I. Share the township's view though, that shared driveways aren't desirable. So I might consider, you know, if we can come up with some sort of option. I, I'd be okay with it. But if you're asking me yea or nay right now for shared driveways, I would say nay. But we can discuss. I mean, if, if, if there's a way to reach some sort of agreement, I. Consider that.
Do you mind if I ask if there's, aside from the driveway issue, is there any other problem with the plan or is that seems to be the?
Yeah. Yeah. By definition of, in the zoning ordinance, it doesn't obligate you to access the area that you have the full. And we've had this before, not several lots in a row, but. Not unusual, but. Up front edge on a road that might be down a steep slope and you're taking access at another location.
Yeah. So I'm all right with the layout.
I mean, may, maybe I could suggest that your attorney contact Mary Everly about how it. Just discuss how an stern easement. You know, be crafted like that with the. If the plan commission saw the language or understood with the, with the triggering mechanisms being. Maybe that would be easier to. Accept it or not.
Yeah, I'd like to see something. What the agreement would look like. And if you have one for yours, I mean, if it's.
Yeah. Sure. John has some samples though. Now, if I understood how you have this written, you are proposing to do improvements on Rock Hill. Roads, unlimited frontage that you have on Camp Rock Hill.
That's happened. Richland Town. Stop this. My driveway, back there. At the time, it was all the driveway. I just want to widen enough entrance that everybody can stay on. I'll be blacktop at the eighty foot stretch all the way back to the ultimate right way. Two hundred foot stretch. Entrance is already on my property. So of that two hundred feet, I'll be widening probably sixty-five, sixty-six. It will only be about a hundred thirty feet.
Well, I think, you know, we'll need to see that. Detailed, detailed out for a final decision, but so, but the concept is you'll be doing some work on Camp Rock Hill Road. You're asking for full waivers on Butter Creek Road.
I'm not sure. I, I guess.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's, that's what I read the letter. And again, the, the widening on, especially the two hundred foot lot. How far that extends, that brings that tree back into question. Can't widen the frontage right to that tree. All right. Well, that's why it'll be good to show it clearly on the plan and then.
What was submitted here to go was. The widening at my place. The other side and the board said they didn't want to see the widening dead end. That's crap.
Right.
So the driveway cuts to there, that's the widening. One and all the continuing is that's correct. We, that, that'd be the other reason. Want that hundred thirty feet, a hundred twenty feet of permanent sidewalk. And then it's dead end.
And we just had all the sidewalk discussions with Walwal, but I would tend to think there's even less chance that. There'll be future sidewalk in this location.
But if you split five and six. Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to picture how that would be with your widening if you.
Certain half of that area remain as the western half of that widening. Widening would be a rival. So they would make sense as opposed to widening all along.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, so you have your driveway cuts and then nothing, not wide.
Yeah, I'm not sure again, due to the fact how. Small the road is and how tight the road is, especially in that area, the other side of the road has a hitch. My original gaming plan left somebody that had to dispose of that and I'm gonna widen. Instead of two driveway cuts, I'm gonna make one big driveway cut and widen that whole set. Somebody can pull in there, no problem. I don't want to have two individual driveway into the ultimate right away. I'll split it into, after the ultimate right away, they'll be. They'll be separate, like a little up until the ultimate right away. I would like to guys to tag with it on, on both stretches.
Yeah, I don't see a need for a sidewalk.
Why not? I mean, the curb introduces another drainage.
Yeah.
Issue. Once you put the curb in, then you have to deal with getting the water out of the curb. And being that they're limited areas. If it was a longer frontage, it may be a different question. I, I would have to see on the plan how you're planning to do the driveways. I mean, I kind of understand what you're talking about, but. I need to see it to know ultimately what work, but I think. No, I was just gonna say the curb and sidewalk, I think is a separate issue from the widening discussion. That's either plan commissioner is in favor of it or.
But if you've got two separate, or yeah, two separate driveways for each house. Do you need a marker? Monument or a pin somewhere to distinguish whose property is whose? And if you pave it over, then.
Well, there would be a property marker at their ultimate right away line. So, you know, maybe if you do. Tim said to bring it all the way to ultimate right away and it's probably you bring it somewhat, you know, somewhat short of that. So the marker is at the ultimate right away line, splitting the two property.
You put a lamp post.
I need to put a boulder there. I need drill a hole.
There's a few of them out there.
No shortage. How about the, the street lighting? We've been, we've been asking applicants to put some type of post lamp at the end of driveways. Or one for safety, number two. Coming in at night.
It really is nothing out there.
Still, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you want to keep it. It doesn't mean you don't need to make it safer.
So we're gonna have that probably now lighting up the fire that they love so much.
I'm just talking lamp posts. We're not talking. Yeah, we're, I'm just talking lampposts. We're not talking. Street lane.
Somebody comes home and gets on.
How many of them don't get poles?
Deer walks by.
The big problem with the. Three lot. The five and six is in the woods. What the thought was, what the eighty foot stretch is, was solar lighting, actually solar lighting.
Yeah, we've accepted solar lampposts before. That's that's not an issue.
So heavily wooded.
Where I was gonna get to.
I'm not gonna charge the owner today.
And to get wire all out there about and and out. The solar idea is great.
I'm not opposed to doing solar. Just just something to give a guide.
I feel put it out.
I got mine under fruition.
Oh, yeah.
A lot easier than monkey. Yeah, take away. Um. So.
We're closer. You got to work in the driveways. That kind of getting out of this here.
Yes, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, see what you can come up with on splitting five and six and what kind of verbiage you can get for. Future split of. The other two shared lanes.
Encouraging us parts that we've gotten.
I mean, we got through.
He's getting too old for this. Alright, well, thank you. Yes.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night and happy hour.
Have a good night.
Well. Select property. Fail. I forgot about public comment. I'm in public comment. We're not. We didn't take any.
I don't know if anyone was here for this like properties.
Then I think for the last one, forgot to ask.
Oh, oh, public comment on. Well, you didn't take action.
No. Alright, so. All been. Well.
You want to see if anybody's here.
What's that?
Anybody here? Absolutely perfect.
I don't know. You don't really talk about it without select properties here. At least I know it's not going to be on there. Is anybody here regarding the select properties project on Augustine Road? Just curious.
Right. Yeah, we we shouldn't talk too much about it without the applicant.
Yeah, I'm just saying that. They're not here.
Yeah, they're not coming in tonight, I think.
Um, alright.
I guess I will make one comment in general. The projects that they've talked about. That require public water and sewer. Aside from the issue of changing who has jurisdiction. I still think it's, I think it's in our best interest to have a presentation similar. To what Telfer gave us tonight. From whoever the ultimate provider that water and sewer is. What their implementation plan. Rather than just assume it. Approve the project and hope it happens somewhere over time.
Yeah. I I mean. If the supervisors don't agree to. Amendment Act five thirty-seven.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Less than a facility. My comment would be. Couldn't we start with that? Got to come in with all these different plans and. It could all get shot down. Struggle.
It was recommended to the developer to address the sewer water issue upfront. Really, he has yet to make a submission to the board of supervisors to discuss.
We'll tell them we're not going to see him before they do that. They're reviewing stuff a lot. I'm not. Comes to fruition. Anyway. Anything else?
Probably be talking about this.
Um. There's no pending. Projects, right, that we have to deal with?
I don't think so. I'll check quick. No. Alright. Well, just in case you guys were curious. I do have two Forest and Tower Road properties listed. They're submitting separately to do the lot line adjustment for that property up on between Forest and Tower Road. For select properties, but that's why we're treating it as a separate application.
Okay.
They they don't, I guess they want to process that first. And then do the subdivision with the reconfigured lot.
Again, that involves the. Modification of the five thirty-seven as well, right?
But the subdivision, the lot line adjustment wouldn't, because there's no construction goes on. So theoretically, they could go through with the lot line adjustment, reconfigure those lots. And maybe never develop it with the other plan, but they they chose to submit that separately. So that's why we have two. Two projects that look similar on the list. One is for the subdivision, one is just for the lot line adjustment. Or I think they're calling it consolidation plan, whatever, however they want to call it. And we did get preliminary plant submission for the large lawn avenue section. Oh, really? Main development. Yeah, that's. Sitting, it's sitting right there. That would be. That hasn't been reviewed yet. It's the initial submission. Yeah, I don't know what, um. Yeah, he he shouldn't said it's a responsibility, but it is available here at the township. I don't know if it's on available online through the website yet. I haven't reviewed it yet. That's my picking up the plan from the township. I haven't looked through it. As I said, it it hasn't been reviewed. It'll be on a future. Future meeting. You could ask if you call the office. During daytimes. You could ask them about seeing.
Was that just a notification? What if they got?
Yeah, they're required as part of the submission. Yeah.
They're special.
At least they did it.
Yeah, right. Made you doubly happy, huh? No, I don't.
They usually don't do it for months, so at least they did it upfront. But that's a part of a preliminary plant submission is they have to notify. Property owners in the surrounding area.
See, it's gonna happen. You don't even know anything. All the different services, showing the weather and stuff like that, they haven't. Well, I mean, they've. Been through some of these meetings already. So I mean, if you go back and. Look at the videos, probably. Just get a general idea of what they're talking about. Well, they they've come through with a couple of different versions already. Elliot, this morning, project. That's why when the guy in the smartphone, Telford, I was like, yes. If I had systems, what are they, where are they going? I have a, I have a stormwater problem with his lot right now. How are they gonna, how are they gonna solve that? I have a drain. It's raining on mine. Every time it rains, it's the, it floods and it comes flying over my property. Who's his? Uh, select father.
What what is your name and address, if you don't mind?
Brian Donahue and two twenty-one Mountain View.
Thank you. For the record.
Sure. The little, the little. Road in the back behind.
Yeah.
One on that side, Mountain View is the next one over.
Right, we're just trying to figure out where two twenty-nine is.
Yeah. Right directly across from the field.
And are you on the east side of Mountain View or on the? You're three nine seven.
The only gravity is the thunder and every time it rains. Right over my front lawn.
So off of Forest, how many back on the left?
Well, if you're, you said you're across from the property that he bought. A couple of years ago, subdivisions for Youngs. Youngs are down, further down on the opposite side, roughly about.
It's two houses up from the.
Right? Okay. And he's, my name there is probably next to mine. He doesn't own anything else over there. The only thing he owns right now is. A portion of what used to belong to the Youngs between.
No, but he's buying the property on the other side of the Youngs. He's buying part of it.
Right, he's buying. But he doesn't own it now.
Right, but that's where the pump station is. That's where the little creek comes down and crosses under the road. That's the one you're talking about. There's a channel that comes down, crosses. Big hole.
Dead ends and bumps in the back of mine and some bolt and all that. That does something that's wrong. We're trying to fix that. You don't know what we, I don't, I don't know what to do because.
Right, well, the sketch plan that. John was talking about only showed the lot layouts. This plan should show those details that that you're interested in, as the grading, where does the water goes, where does sewer water go?
And how they're gonna tie into sewer if they're going to have what they're going to do, because they don't even tell us that. Well, they, they're, because they don't own the sewer, they they're proposing. A part of one of the lots will be set aside. For Perkasy Borough Authority to. Put their pump in, pump it under three or nine back at the other side. That's why I was saying, I I think. Before we approve the plan with the development, I would like to see Perkasy come in and give us. What their plan is and give people an opportunity to comment on it. And that should be approved before the building permits or the. Development's approved or construction because. Just assuming that, you know, there's going to be a satisfactory. Water and sewer system there without any details behind it, I think is putting part of the hooks. But that point has like the stormwater. Uh, runoff, all that stuff then.
That should be in this.
We haven't seen one that has all. Right?
Correct. Put in seventy-five single family homes in that, in that one spot. Yes. And so if they're going to do that. Five major things between the electric roads. And everything else, you've got to be talking about somewhere just under somewhere right around a billion dollars. Even if they're gonna be getting ten thousand dollars in taxes in the half on each house. If you times that by, I think it doesn't make it very near a billion dollars, which means. I just, I moved in this year. I moved up to Sellersville because I love the area. Why am I? You're gonna drive me out now by raising my taxes and sesame and then making me pull my septic tank out and. Have to tie in your municipal were and everything else and with a grinder pump out front, which lasts roughly five years. That's why I think we need to see what the full plan is. I understand, I understand. I'm just telling you my frustration over, you know, listening to this, this was not disclosed when I first moved. Now I'm, I'm getting the education and stuff like that. Alls I could say is I could emphasize with you because I am seventeen acres at the corner of Forest and Mountain View Road that, um. I had grand hopes and plans for that have gone by the wayside, so. You know, even even if you're a sharp buyer, you're not going to be able to predict the future. They want to change, they're gonna make Mountain View a two lane road with sidewalks and everything else. Well, that plan showed it ripping in front of my property. They were gonna take twenty some feet off of my property. They're building the subdivision. And I lose my property? Something's on. Yeah. I I can't comment on these specifics.
Yeah, without seeing the new plan, the the old plan, the sketch plan didn't show why then.
Well, there was still discussion whether Mountain View Road was going to be emergency access zone or or a full. A full road. I can see it now. You put a road in the back and you put, I I'm assuming they're gonna put over on one, there's probably two exits out there probably. So you know, every, anybody who's going anywhere near Quaker Town could bug out the back. You come down and be doing ninety miles an hour down. With deer and stuff, wildlife along there. That's gonna be a. Could be a show. Wait and see. They'll see what they bring in. Is there a time limit for when they have to produce something before it gets? Basically, this guy's a here from two thousand five. Right, I understand that. There should be a time limit for how long, you know, they have to submit it in time of fact. It expired. There's nothing approved to expire.
Unfortunately, the timeframe is more in the favor of the developer. When when initially submitted, the township has ninety days to act on the plan unless the developer grants an extension. It's not the other way around. The township can't force the the completion of the plan. They could act on an incomplete plan, but it's more driven by the developer. But the initial reviews have to be done in in ninety days. Yeah. That's a different issue. Dilukun never submitted full plans and things, so he is on a different timetable, but we have a. Submission now will determine whether or not it's complete submission, and bizarre, it's not a hundred percent complete. And you could make a request at the township office to see the information they submitted, but I haven't even opened it yet. I don't know how complete it is or isn't.
But I I still would suggest that you take a look at if you have the time, that some of the previous videos or the presentations, because. I believe that the general outline of the area that they're looking to develop is pretty much. Set in stone already. There might be some tweaks in terms of. Well, their letter says seventy-five homes, which sounds consistent with what they've talked about in the past. It might just be a different configuration of. There are nine open space parcels and things like that, but I I believe they're. I don't think they're starting from, I'd be surprised if they're starting from scratch. I I think based on the letter that, um. They're operating under the direction that they've been heading in for the last several months.
Think of all that.
I really wasn't into public comment yet, but if. If there's any more public comment on on this topic, I'll entertain it now. Otherwise, we gotta keep moving. They've all been sketch planned. This is an official preliminary plan. Where they'll have.
Like Walwa, where are they? There is.
They're gonna go in front of the supervisor because we recommended preliminary final approval. There's essentially three steps. Sketch plan, which is optional, but select properties has been submitting sketch plans. And there's a preliminary plan and a final plan, usually on smaller projects or cleaner projects. Preliminary and final get merged into one process. Typically on larger developments like this one, they would get a preliminary approval. Then get some outside agency approvals and then come back to the township to show us that they have all of their their ducks in a row. And then. That if that official submission, there would be another letter that would go. That, if that official submission, there would be another letter that would go. Litigation. This plan is only, this board is only recommending by, they make recommendations to the board of supervisors. Board of Supervisors is the only one that has authorized. To do official actions.
If we would approve, we would recommend approval or denial. It would go to the supervisors. They would vote on approving. Typically, they. But with the advice of the solicitor. It's her. Mary Everly is our, our solicitor.
But certainly if you have concerns, the point of the planning commission is to hear. Resident concerns and things as the process goes through, so I don't think that you have to wait to talk to the supervisor. But this board isn't gonna make a final decision on anything that you bring forth, but they'll, they take into consideration. Property owner comment. As does the developer. It was for a different.
That was for a different project.
He just notified us on Friday that he couldn't make it. It was on the agenda. Think so. Greg moves.
We're worried it was gonna be a long meeting.
It's a large project. I wouldn't, and they have multiple projects into the township. We always suggest that you check the agenda on the website, but I would not. Say a hundred percent. The Lawn Avenue project will be on. There will probably be a select properties project on the agenda next month, but I don't know which one it'll be. It could just be this Augustine Road that we've. Had on tonight. Probably won't be that one.
Anyone else? All right, we gotta move forward. So we're still on old business. Is there any other old business we need? What's coming down the, down the line?
You said what's coming down the line, the Lawn Avenue.
Yeah. Holiday house.
Well, it's another sketch plan. They revised.
Select properties.
They changed that to. They changed that to age ball. Age qualified housing. Yeah.
That's what the holiday house was?
That's what the new sketch plan, it wasn't before that. No, it was just same time. They doubled the lots. Townhouse, age qualified town.
Anything on that other warehouse?
No, we haven't heard anything on. Either. The the Cattle Road, the big warehouse, or the one on Meeting House and Old State. The other two are working her way through their. Side of.
It's demand for warehouse space softening. I read an article once.
I I assume I don't have any direct knowledge.
Center behind Valley was. Really experiencing softness.
I noticed that where the gate used to be in Sellers, where there's a warehouse sitting in there now, but I didn't, didn't see before.
It's actually solar atmospheres. On the other side, Diamond Street on the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually solar. It's manufactured, so.
Great spike, so your ability to use a warehouse to treat for nothing is a new one.
All right, now move forward. New business. I have no new business.
None for me.
Else we need to be aware of? All right. Uh, public comment? Is there any left? Yes, sir. They're not. Um, I don't know if that was actually considered when it was.
I don't think it was.
And and in that project, they actually have. Frontage on another road. So those, the three of those lots. Three of those lots had frontage on Butter Creek Road. They're still accessing from Camp Rock Hill Road, but technically they have have fronted, which means they weren't flag lots. That's just that scenario, that, that project. Yep, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing not all, for a motion to withdraw.
We'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'll second it. Call in favor. Meeting member, thank you, everyone. Happy holidays, everybody.